Good afternoon. The November the 10th, 2015 meeting of the Marion County School Board is called to order. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience to please turn off your electronic devices or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County school system of the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and/or televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located on the front table. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or student discipline matter, please complete a lime green form. These forms must be fully completed and are received by the board secretary no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Bobby James, District Three.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District Five.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Stacy, District One.
Here.
Mrs. Carol Ely, District Two.
Present.
Ms. Angie Boynton, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Lake, Board Attorney.
Here.
Mr. George Tomlin, Superintendent.
Here.
Thank you. Retired Colonel of the United States Air Force and the North Marion High School Senior Aerospace Science Instructor, Galen Mays, please introduce the students who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair, board members. Thank you for having us here. I would like to introduce Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Ashley Shirley for the invocation and Cadet Colonel Neil Delano for the pledge, as well as the members of the color guard.
Would everyone please rise for the invocation? Your Lord have truly given us a blessing in disguise. You've given us a grand victory over the rest. The distinguished merit places us in a proper section that rises us above the rest. We give thanks to your grand blessing and anoint those young men and women for those proposedful characters and strong spirit. It has been shown over time that we have gone through tough situations, but thanks to you, Lord, we have made it once again as a distinguished unit among the rest. We set an example by giving the younglings of this corps a bright future to which into a better life to propose around. So unto you, Lord, amen.
Amen.
I would like to introduce Cadet Colonel Neil Delano for the pledge.
Thank you, Ms. Shirley, and thank you, everyone, for having us here. I would ask everybody to please remain standing for the presentation of the colors. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. What she was alluding to was our recognition of the receiving distinguished unit award, which is given to junior reserve officer training corps units from their respective headquarters, in our case, the United States Air Force at Maxwell Air Force Base in Alabama. They sent out a representative to review our unit once every three years, and they did so last year. The unit is then given the opportunity to approve upon the ratings, which the evaluator gives us, and in this case, a junior ROTC unit is awarded a distinguished unit award with merit if they are recognized for exceeding standards, which we did so last year, largely or solely due to the caliber of the men and women which you saw here tonight. We have one hundred and thirty-three members of our corps last year, and we're up to one hundred and thirty-eight members of our program this year, and it's continually to grill. We had five new members added to our program just this week. It's an accomplishment that requires a minimum average of twelve hours of community service per cadet, as well as meeting or exceeding all of our goals. And the award consists of a ribbon that may be worn by the standard uniform of the cadets that attain it. And so we're only one of about twelve recipients that received it nationwide last year, and to my knowledge, the only program that was able to receive it this year, or last year as well. So again, we appreciate all of your support as board members, and Mr. Tomlin, he is the superintendent, and also personal thanks to Mr. Whitehouse, our principal, for his unwavering support in our program as well. Again, thank you.
Before you go, sir.
Colonel Mays.
I just wanted to say thank you for coming. It's so appropriate that you all came to do our pledge today, the day before Veterans' Day, and looks like we've got some future veterans, so it was beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll be out at the ceremony tomorrow as well.
Just a moment. Any more comment from the board? Mrs. Kelly?
I just want to thank you also, and I owe you guys an apology. I think the first time we ever met, Ms. Shirley, we were at a Wounded Warriors race, the 5K at Marion.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And I think we were in shorts and we had... And I walked past you guys a couple times, and you're going to just go in places, this group, and it's such an honor that you have also done an excellent job with your cadets. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you on the job well done, excellent job. I got to meet the cadets that were participating today, and they're wonderful individuals. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I agree. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Board, with the exception of J D sixteen dash ten, J D sixteen dash eleven E, J D sixteen dash twelve, which have been removed entirely from the agenda under item S D forty-one, I recommend approval of the agenda for the November tenth, 2015, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, the audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
Board, may I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? I need a motion, a second, please.
Go move.
Second.
Move by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Thank you. Board, may I have a motion to approve the minutes for the October the eighth, 2015, administrative briefing and work session, the October thirteenth, 2015, school board meeting? May I have a motion, a second, please?
So move.
Second.
Move by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Any discussion? A call or question? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Thank you, and the motion passes five zero. Mr. James Jackson, Community Liaison, along with Dr. Mike Jordan, Representative for CASA, that's the Community Council Against Substance Abuse, which is part of the Marion County's Children's Alliance, are here to recognize the school-level winners of the Red Ribbon School Spirit Awards. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. How are you all doing this evening? Thank you so much for having us here, and I just wanted to come up here and say a little bit about Red Ribbon this year and announce the winners for the Red Ribbon School Spirit Contest. We had a successful campaign this year. We had number of number of students and schools participating in Red Ribbon. Campuses were adorned in red, taking a united front stance against substance abuse and anti-bullying as well, so it was extremely successful. We had many judges going out to the schools and seeing what types of activities and what did the students actively participate in, and that went from signing pledges to not using drugs, anti-bullying activities. It was just totally amazing. The...we want to say thank you to CASA for sponsoring the Red Ribbon School Spirit Contest winners. CASA, along with Dr. Jordan and the Marion County Children's Alliance, they provide five hundred dollars for each level winner, that meaning the high school, middle school, and elementary school level, and a traveling trophy. And I just wanted to say thank you to Dr. Jordan and to CASA, and if you would please come up here and have a couple of words to say, Dr. Jordan?
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to appear before you. Historically, the Red Ribbon Week has gone on for many, many years in our community. The Children's Alliance only took over CASA, the drug coalition, five years ago, and we've continued it. It's an honor to be a part of it and to partner with you all and to have an opportunity to interface with your students, and so we hope this is something that will continue for many years to come. And we're thankful that James is allowed to participate because he's a great connection between our organization and the school system, and it's a pleasure to work with him.
Thank you, Dr. Jordan. Thank you. Without further ado, we're going to go ahead and announce the winners. For the elementary contest level, we have East Marion, and Michael Carter's coming up to accept the trophy and check.
Check and trophy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Appreciate it. For the middle school category, we have Horizon Academy, and Dr. Thornton will be accepting the check and the trophy this evening. And third, but not forgotten, final, is Forest High School for the high school winner, and we're going to have Ms. Fink and Mr. Reed come up and accept the trophy and the check. They are students who attend Forest High School. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Would you like, guys like to flank them on each end?
Sure.
One, two, three, a couple more. And great, thank you.
Board members. Board members and superintendent, we want to say thank you again so much for helping us with this as well and knowing that this is a worthwhile venture within our school system and our community.
James said I could just tell you about one other initiative that we have in connection when we do in partnership that I'm really excited about, and that's our SAD Club, Students Against Destructive Decisions. It began at North Marion High School several years ago, and we've supported them all along, their Drive for Life program that I'm sure you've heard about. Well, at this point, we're in seven of your schools and adding every year, and I think it's a great way for us to connect to the kids all year long. Red Ribbon Week's great, but it only goes on for a week. The SAD Clubs interface with the student bodies throughout the year, so you'll have a club of maybe twenty-five to thirty kids, but they are interfacing and doing, providing peer connections with the whole student body for a whole year. And so I think this is our best way to reach kids about the problems with drugs and just all the issues that kids face, distracted driving, drunk driving, bullying, all those things. And so we're excited about it, and I did want to share that with you all, that I think it's a great partnership, and you've been cooperative, and we hope to get funds to continue expanding the number of schools that we're associated with.
All right. Board members, do you have a comment? Ms. Stacy?
Yes, I'd like to say thank you both for coming, and Mike, I've known you for nearly forty years. You're a great American.
I am forty, unfortunately.
You're a great American. Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Any more board comment?
Congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work in coordinating this Red Ribbon Week.
It's a pleasure.
It was great. Thank you.
Mr. James?
I just know Dr. Jordan and how much they really do. You know, we've worked together on various organizations, and one of the things I would like to just share with you is our belief that our education do not stop at the end of the school day, because I know there are programs that you really work with us to educate our kids after school, and if we don't say anything as a community, I would personally say hats off to you for the tremendous amount of work you do. And being honest with you, Doc, I don't know how you attend all these board meetings you attend.
You know our staff, and it's the staff. I get out of their way, and they make it happen, but thank you for the compliment.
You're welcome. You have a tremendous job you do out there. Thank you.
God's keeping you young. Mike, you look just the same.
Ms. Kathy Quaylen, Executive Director of School Development and Evaluation, would like to recognize a special individual responsible for affording Marion County students the opportunity to participate in various service academies. Ms. Quaylen?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Superintendent, Ms. Flotke, and Mr. Lake. It is a pleasure to be here this evening to honor Captain Larry Fagan, who has served thirty-one years in the U.S. Navy and the Naval Air Reserves, and I'd like to go ahead and call Captain Fagan to come and join me if I could, please. You may be wondering why we are honoring someone from the Naval Academy, but in nineteen seventy-eight, Larry joined the admission for the U.S. Naval Academy as a blue and gold officer and as a volunteer to promote the admission of qualified young people as midshipmen to the Naval Academy. He has been very successful in assisting Marion County students in this endeavor to obtain scholarships which are valued at five hundred thousand dollars, and also, when these young people are admitted to the academies, they receive a twelve hundred dollar per month stipend, plus they have a five-year guarantee of a job after they graduate. Captain Fagan has received several recognitions from the Naval Academy in his career. He also has attended other service academies as a liaison and is qualified to recruit and counsel for the Air Force and the Army as well. Larry states that out of all the things he has done in the Navy, counseling of young people for admissions to the service academy has been by far the most rewarding. I would also like to add that not only has he influenced our students, but he also has sponsored many trips for educators to go to the service academies and tour. I had the pleasure of doing so when I was an assistant principal at North Marion High School and had the opportunity to tour the service academy in Annapolis, and it was a great experience to sit with those young people and see how proud they were, and it was really a wonderful experience. So I'd like to thank Captain Fagan for that as well. So we do have a recognition this evening, a plaque for Captain Fagan, and it says, "Recognizing Captain Larry Fagan for your efforts with counseling of young people for admission to the service academies. Thank you for your contribution to Marion County Public Schools presented November tenth, 2015."
Thank you so much.
It's really true that it's so rewarding to affect a young person's life, and we've had so many successes here in Marion County. You remember Stacy Yop? Stacy, young man from Lake Ware High School, is now the commanding officer of a guided missile destroyer in the Mediterranean. Doug Recamp, his mom and dad were teachers, I think, here in Marion County. He's in the zone for Admiral this year. This will be the first one. Years ago, we had the top graduate at the Naval Academy. Coming up here the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, we've got a midshipman coming down. Name is Charles Stabler. His father's Dr. Stabler from Bellevue's, a medical doctor, and Charles has got close to a four-point-oh average at the Naval Academy and wants to be a Navy pilot, and I'm sure he's going to do well. But it's just been an absolute joy working with these kids. I try to keep track of them after they leave the academy, go on down the road. But there's a couple of people I'd like to sincerely thank. One is Bobby James. Bobby's been supportive of our efforts in Marion County for years, and also George Tomlin has got the attention of a lot of the principals to help us in our recruiting efforts. By far the most helpful principal in Marion County is Jane Elfriman over at Westport. She has just been over backwards to help us to put out the word on the academies. You might be interested to know, we've got in somewhere between thirty and fifty members in Marion County in the last thirty years. That's somewhere between twenty and thirty million dollars worth of scholarships, but you can be proud of these young people. They're smart, they're dedicated, and I hope that I'm around to see some more of them attend, but thank you so much.
Thank you. And sir, before you walk away, board comment? Board comment, Mr. James?
I'll take the lead on this, because I think one of the things that I can honestly say throughout my career as a high school principal, I can always count on Mr. Fagan, on Captain Fagan, to really support our youngsters. And when I say this, he had mentioned the ponders kid, and we had one kid out at Lake Ware that you work so hard to get into the academy, and it's just amazing to me that you have shown such zeal for what you do in terms of going to the...we go to our college recruitment out at the college, and one of the first things he will say to me, "Bobby, there's not enough kids taking these tests to be prepared for this." So again, I know that you really push this. I will just share this to you, this opportunity with you that I had with you, is going to the Naval Academy, and one of the things you said to me is that it's amazing that they can feed five thousand people in an hour. And sure enough, I had the opportunity to go in that mess hall and to see those cadets come in, and actually, they fed five thousand people in an hour. And it's just an amazing story about the efficiency of our military and the fact that we have such a great young man attending those academies. And again, Marion County is very blessed to have you working with us and our kids. You're saying you're retiring, but who's going to replace you in terms of keeping us on that? That's the question. Somebody said, "If you don't have nobody to replace you, then you can't go." So again, I want to thank you on behalf of all the youngsters that have worked with you, and especially the teachers that have worked with you as well. Thank you so much.
Ms. King, do you have something?
Thank you, Captain Fagan, for your dedication to our students.
Ms. Stacy, you wanted to say something?
Thank you so much. You get the best of the best, don't you?
Pretty much.
Must be neat to know the best of the best. Thank you.
Another surprising thing is in this thirty-plus years I've been doing this, we've never had a kid flunk out.
You have a great success rate. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, board, may I have a motion to adopt a proclamation celebrating Education Support Professionals Day on November the eighteenth, 2015? May I have a motion and a second?
Go move.
Second.
Move by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? I call a question. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Ms. Wendy Ford, Supervisor of Employment Services, and Ms. Anne Marie Marlowe, President of Marion Essential Support Personnel, please come forward for the reading and presentation of the proclamation.
Good evening. I am here with the President of the Marion Educational Support Personnel, also known as M E S P, to announce this proclamation. There are nearly fourteen hundred educational support personnel in Marion County Public Schools. To name a few, these dynamic employees include the clerks in our schools and our district offices, desktop support, library and health clinic assistants, bookkeepers, receptionists, registrars, P E technicians, and the paraprofessionals who work with our students and families every day. Though they are often behind the scenes, they are an invaluable part of our school system. Our education support professionals are the backbone of the district, and we would not be successful without them. In honor of the education support professionals, it's a pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Whereas the third Wednesday in November will mark the annual observance of Education Support Professionals Day, and whereas our education support professionals work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism, and whereas the success of Marion County students relies upon the support staff to be a positive role models, and whereas support staff have a major role in assisting our educators who shape the minds which will create the future, and whereas all support staff in Marion County have an important role to play in ensuring that all of today's students are prepared to meet the challenges established by high educational standards. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed, the School Board of Marion County, Florida recognizes the third Wednesday of November to be Education Support Professionals Day, November eighteenth, 2015, dated this tenth day of November, 2015, and it is signed by our board members and our superintendent.
I don't know what else to say. I really love what you have prepared. It was very good. Like, I really didn't prepare anything, but had I, it would have sounded just like that. And for real, I just really just want to thank you on behalf of all the support staff and the support professionals that we have in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Marlowe, before you go, Mrs. Ely would like to say something?
As a former principal, I can tell you that we could not survive and help to make our children successful without you all, whether you're a teacher assistant, working in the cafeteria, driving a bus, or cleaning our schools. You are the wind beneath our wings, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again. Mrs. King, go ahead.
As a principal, as a teacher, you are absolutely correct. You guys are vital to our school systems, and as you said, they're behind the scenes, but they're invaluable, and they are an asset, and as a board member, we are, or I am, just grateful and thankful for each and every one of you and your role that you play.
Thank you. Mr. James?
You know, it's one of these things where I have an opportunity sometime to say thank you for a lot of things. When I look at the non-support people, I'm often reminded of a trainer in a lion cage without his whip or his chair, because it's one of those things where you're not the teacher, but you carry yourselves in a manner that the kids respect you and follow your direction. And we may not, you may not be the teacher, but everybody is a teacher on that campus, and you're a part of it. And I just want you guys to know, I respect you, and I'm sure the board respects you as a teacher, because you are a teacher. Everybody teaches in the classroom. You support, but you are also a teacher. And again, this is an excellent opportunity for us to say thank you.
Appreciate it, and I'm going to share your comments with the support staff that I can too, as well. It's great that you guys say those things. We don't hear it often. It's very busy at school. It's very busy at schools, and, and, I mean, I know most administrators feel that way, but it's hard to get to everybody and say that. So for you guys to say that here, on the record, in front of everybody, that means a lot, and I do appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you. Individuals who have completed the appropriate form prior to five forty PM will now have the opportunity to address the board. Before you begin your presentation, it is required that you state your name and address for the record. Additionally, please spell your last name. Matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents wishing to address the board regarding a discipline matter will have the opportunity to do so at that time. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain some additional points.
Thank you. If you do plan to address the school board tonight, please be aware of the school board's procedures. A copy is available to you from Mr. Christian or on one of the front tables. AV presentations are permitted if provided at least forty-eight hours prior to the meeting to the school board's assistant. Audiovisual presentations are limited to a total of five minutes. Use of any student's name, except by his or her parents or guardian, or identifying references to or identification of other students and their families is strictly prohibited. Based on time consideration, the school board by a majority vote may rightfully limit the number of presentations on any one topic, shorten the presentation time, move the public comment time to a different position on the agenda, or eliminate the public comment time altogether. Ms. Boynton?
Thank you, sir. Madam Secretary, do we have any speakers tonight?
Marcia King, please. Name is Marcia King, A-I-N-G. You want my address, too? One-four-one-six-two, southeast Fifty-first Avenue, Summerfield, Florida. Good evening. First, I'd like to apologize for my previous ignorance of protocol, as pointed out by Mr. James at the previous meeting two weeks ago. I'm not a politician, just a parent who sees things going on that probably need to be changed, maybe. I, I would like for the board to possibly revisit the code of conduct and how it's set forth to students, if that's possible. I don't know if you remember the ordeal with my son. But I do believe that children should be disciplined with a, with love and not a heavy hand. When you have a first offender, I think that things should be taken into consideration. I think that each child should be treated as an individual. The, the, I did speak with the principal, as I was told I should have. Things were not the way I felt they should have been. And then other things were brought forth at a later time, added on afterwards, without my knowledge. My son was, did his in-school suspension. He was given a day off from that for good behavior. And, and then, when it came time for them to wear their costumes to school for Halloween, he was told he couldn't participate because he had two demerits on his record. I wasn't aware of the demerits, so I called the school. And I said, "What is this about?" And they said, "Well, he, he got in trouble, so he has demerits." I said, "Well, I didn't, I wasn't aware of this." And he's, Mr. Hicks said, "You signed the form." And I said, "This form that I had in front of me that says nothing about them?" He said, "Well, they might have been added after you signed it." I said, "You can't do that." But that, you know, that's neither here nor there. It was obviously on record somewhere. I didn't have it. And I said, "Well, how does he get rid of these? How does he redeem himself?" Because he thought it was over. So he said, "Well, he'd have to get good referrals in order to reverse the bad referrals." I said, "Well, how does he do that?" "Well, he has to go above and beyond, not just be a normal child, but go above and beyond, and it has to be recognized by other people, teachers, administrators, other students. Has to be brought to the discipline office and given a good referral." I said, "Well, so his, his good behavior at in-school suspension doesn't count?" He said, "No." And then my son brought to my attention that they give out these Panther Bucks, teachers, administrators, bus drivers, for exemplary behavior. And things that they see, they do. My son has over forty of these. That doesn't count either, apparently. So I, my, my concern is that there are, I asked Mr. Hicks, "Who, who implemented this demerit system?" And he said, "I did." I said, "Well, who monitors it? I do." This goes above and beyond the code of conduct. And I just feel that anything that's used to discipline our children should, parents should be made aware of it, and the children should be made aware of how it works. So I would just appreciate if maybe we could set up a meeting with maybe the Parent Advisory Council and have some input from parents to discipline our children and, and make them respect authority. You know, not force it on them, but teach them how to respect authority. That's it.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Stacy?
I'm on the Bellevue Middle School website. I've clicked on the parent clicks. I've clicked a...
The website doesn't work.
Well, I don't see anything about a demerit system. How were the parents to find out about this?
I was told, he was told about it. He knew what he was doing, and he was told about it. This is what I was...
Who told him?
Apparently, Mr. Hicks, from what I gathered.
No, but I mean, who, where's the policy that talks about a demerit system? I'm on the website looking for it.
And, and when I called the school, like I said, I spoke with two different people. None of them knew how it worked. They sent me over to, they said that they would have Mr. Hicks call me, and he said, "Someone else accidentally called me, they emailed the wrong person, his band teacher called me, and said that the demerits fall off at the end of nine weeks, so he should have been okay." Because he, he did everything else that was required to wear his costume at school. He has a three-point-oh grade point average. He, he, you know, he, he did all his A.R. points. And the only other thing that was sketchy was the two demerits. So his, his band teacher said, "Well, from what I know, it should be okay." When, when it came back to Mr. Hicks calling me, he said, "No, they stay on his record for the whole year." That's when I asked, "Well, how does he get rid of this?" Because this was a one, a first offense. He didn't really realize what he, what the implications of what he did was. My son is very naive, and that's my fault. But, you know, he, he's an innocent child. You know, it's sad, but it's true.
He just had a water, he had a little water gun on the...
He had a, he had a water gun that was filled with water already. So it, it was being used for what it was created for. It wasn't, wasn't intended to be a weapon of any kind. And in his mind, it was no different than bringing a toy to show and tell. He has no friends. He's, he is fifty-seven pounds. He's tiny. He's been bullied. He's trying to reach out to get attention. Yes, ma'am.
I don't, I think that, you know, you addressed the board at the last meeting off television regarding that. And I would like for you to, you know, keep, if you don't mind, I wanted to talk to the superintendent about your concern. Ms. Stacy, do you have anything else to say?
I just want to say, Mrs. Boynton, I thank the parents for coming before the school board. And this is one thing that the parent, we have a Parent Advisory Council. I would welcome you to come be a part of that. Because parents that are willing to come and speak up and do it respectfully, as you've been very respectful, that's the way to do it, and that's what we want to, to teach all, you know, parents, to be respectful and go through the, go through the channels. And I remember when Mr. James said to you, "Well, have you spoken to the principal?" Well, you had no idea. You spoke to the assistant principal. You didn't know that you were to go over his head to the principal.
Right.
And that's what the parent group wants to teach parents how to do, is to navigate the system. Or you would have known that, because we would have had a website up and running that would have told you the different, the different layers that you can go through. But I would welcome you to join us, and our next meeting is next Wednesday night at six-five-thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Stacy. Mr. James?
I still heard some things that I'm not very comfortable with. He's got fifty, he's got forty little cards there, right? Okay, my big thing is that at some point, I still felt that the principal should have been involved with this in terms of the demerits or whatever. I keep hearing the one person, but I, I still don't hear where the principal said, "Hey, this is it. She had an opportunity, I can do this." Because when I look at what the principal can do, if he's got that many demerits, I think there should have been a discussion down there with the principal and that. Mr. Villanella, did anybody talk, push that toward the principal?
Well, I know that Mr. Ralston spoke to the lady in regards to the in-school suspension. I don't know about the bear bucks.
The bear bucks, to me, would y'all look into that? Because if this kid walking around with a pocketful of those things, well, good on him. Okay, okay, I, I want to get...
My only concern was the fact that, you know, when I did speak to the principal, he made it, made me feel like I should feel lucky that he only got three days in school suspension, and it was coded incorrectly by the high school. Because according to him, not only should he have gotten five days out of school suspension, but ten. So he obviously backs up the discipline office, which is fine. He, he can do that. But I don't feel it's appropriate at this point.
Look at it.
Thank you. And ma'am, I, Mr. Superintendent, I do have some concerns over some of the items she did say. You know, she's already signed a, a, a form, and then something was added after she signed. And so how would the parent or even the student know? So I'd like for you to address those issues as well as what Mr. James brought to us. And she, she was talking about our student code of conduct, and we're working on it now. Maybe she could sit with Mr. Villanella and give him her ideas so that he can take it to that committee or he can have her as a parent on that committee if they have room. I, I think there would be some viable solutions to, to help us with situations, situations, excuse me. And I really appreciate you bringing that back to the board, to our attention.
And, and I do want to make, I'm not trying to get anyone in trouble. I just, I, I, I feel that things should be revisited and, and, you know, changed a little bit so that kids like my son with a first offense, new kid in a new school, you know, he doesn't really know what's going on. So you're gonna throw the book at him and, and ruin his morale and ruin his dreams because he thinks he has a chance. And with all this other stuff that he's not aware of, his chance is gone.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chairman Boynton, and thank you, Ms. King, for coming back. I believe some of my comments were that if you were not satisfied, we would see you again. I believe I said that. And so still, I do thank you for coming back. Mark Villanella is our Executive Director for Student Services. He's anxiously waiting to visit with you. He will revisit a couple of these other issues that you've already mentioned, give you some other opportunities. So as you leave, if you'd like to leave now, you can, or when you do leave, a Mr. Villanella will walk out with you and point you in the right direction and get you going with some other things, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. King.
And I did want to clarify that the National Honor Society, they did not take that away because I was, the principal told me that he did not give him that award, so he could not take it away.
Thank you, ma'am.
I just wanted to let you know that.
And I think you, you will be very fortunate to talk to Mr. Villanella. He will help you tremendously. I have great confidence in him. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Secretary?
Chris Altobello.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, Mr. Superintendent, Chris Altobello, twenty-twenty Northeast Forty-third Street, Ocala, Florida. I am here tonight to also recognize our sister union, the Marion Education Support Personnel. Next Wednesday, November eighteenth, is Education Support Professionals Day. It is a day set aside to recognize and honor the more than two-point-nine million education support professionals, including some of the finest here in Marion County, who provide services such as clerical, instructional and administrative support, transportation and custodial, food planning, nursing and health, security and technical support. The Marion Education Association celebrates the accomplishments and valued service of our dedicated support professionals here in Marion County. Education Support Professionals Day is part of the National Education Association's Annual American Education Week, which was first celebrated in nineteen-twenty-one and draws attention to the tagline, "Great Public Schools: A Basic Right and Our Responsibility." The tagline represents NEA's vision of calling upon all Americans to do their part in making public schools great for every child so that they can grow and achieve in the twenty-first century. NEA past president Dennis Van Rokel once said that by participating in ESP Day, we will be joining millions of people nationwide in celebrating the hard work, dedication, and invaluable services our education support professionals provide. They are unsung heroes who drive our students to school, help them cross the street, provide them with nutritious meals, serve as partners in educating our children, and keeping school buildings safe, operational, and clean. ESP Day was first celebrated in nineteen-eighty-seven after the NEA Representative Assembly, the association's annual convention of nearly ten thousand member delegates, called for a creation of a way to honor the contributions of support staff. Today's support professionals provide services that enable students to learn in a positive, supportive environment. Education support professionals are making a difference in ensuring every child receives a quality education. Laura Montgomery, past president of the National Council of Education Support Professionals, once said, "Too often ESP's contributions are overlooked or considered insignificant." But that trend is changing. As we move towards school reform, ESPs are there on the front lines. The end result, where ESPs are involved in the school-community team, you have better schools and more successful students. So Anne Marie and Dawn, on behalf of the Marion Education Association, I would like to say continued thanks to all of our local education support professionals. You are a valued partner in the education of our youth, and your dedication and commitment is recognized by teachers across this district. So thank you, and I'm gonna get you a nice frame to hang that up where you feel appropriate. Thank you, board.
Thank you. Madam Secretary? Okay, board, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of items C-eighteen, C-twenty-seven, and C-thirty, which have been placed on the regular agenda for discussion? May I have a motion and a second, please?
Second.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five-zero. Board, may I have a motion to approve the outside council agreement with Andrew B. Thomas Esquire for legal services as needed? A motion and a second, please?
Go move.
I wish to amend the...
Excuse me.
Oh, I'm sorry, we have to, we have...
Mr. James, you made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. King. Mrs. Ely, you withdrew this item?
Yes, I did, this outside council agreement. The school board retains and employs attorney to provide legal services in the area of exceptional student education and other areas as mutually agreed, and to render advice and counsel to the school board's superintendent, school board attorney, Stephen E. Lake, board attorney. That's item one, and Brenda, do you, did you give them...
They're all ready.
No, I'm sorry, excuse me. Okay, that was item one. If you look at item one in yellow, that's the area that, that I would like to, I would like to change. The wording Stephen E. Lake in item one, "School Board Attorney," is redundant since "school board attorney" is already stated as well as unnecessarily restrictive. I feel that the same about the insertion of Mr. Lake's name in item seven and his email address in item eight, and they're both highlighted, so I'm the next page. Listing of generic titles such as... Listing of generic titles such as School Board, which is our superintendent, School Board Attorney, is defining and provides consistency with our agreements. Therefore, I wish to offer an amendment. I would like to remove the wording under item one, Stephen E. Lake, School Board Attorney. I would like to remove the wording under item seven, Stephen Lake, and remove wording under item eight, Stephen E. Lake with the, his email address. I did speak with Mr. Lake this morning about that, about the outside counsel agreement. We do not name other parties in regular contracts, and if we remove the names, then it will be, the contract will be be more applicable to other situations and without the attorney's name specified.
All right, Mr. Lake, do you have-
There's a motion, you need a second for that amendment.
I do, I got it already.
Is there a second?
Do I have a second? Do I have a second for the motion, Mrs. Ely presented?
Still moved.
Have a motion, a second. Do we have any discussion?
Okay, now, all she's asking for is that the Mr. Lake name be stricken.
Yes.
And the School Board Attorney should be, should be there. So it's, it's basically, say, anybody could be the School Board Attorney. So it covers everybody here. Okay?
I wanted to ask Mr. Lake, since I know he drafted this contract, do you have any problems? I mean, do you, what was your reasoning for putting your, your name as in the contract?
Consistency with the other outside counsel agreements, and basically just for ease of contact information, knowing who to deal with. This is a one-year agreement. And that's all.
Any more discussion with the board? So now we're going to vote on the amendment. It was made by Mrs. Ely and seconded by Mr. James. Leading the name and the email address.
Okay, one, seven, and eight.
One, seven, and eight.
On the-
Do you have more discussion, Ms. Stacy?
I think I do.
Okay.
I think it does help to have our attorney's name there. I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it the way it is at all. He is our School Board lawyer, and it does help people to have contact information on how to reach Mr. Lake. And like you said, it's just for a year. And it's very specific because that's who they contact is, that person. School Board Attorney, I mean, there's a lot of people that just do outside counsel, and they are one of the School Board Attorneys. This is very specific that it is the the sitting School Board Attorney that was hired by the School Board. And I like the, I like that because School Board Attorney, it could get misunderstood if there was some discussion that maybe someone else is representing us in another issue, and they go, you're the School Board Attorney, you're the, this is just very specific exactly who that person is that we contact, and I like specificity in, in contracts, so I don't have a problem with this.
Okay. Mr. James?
When I look at it, and it says, "School Board Superintendent." Guys, we need to be generic here. We got the School Board Superintendent. They all don't have a name, and then we got the Stephen E. Lake, School Board Attorney. School Board Superintendent and School Board Attorney, to me, would be the appropriate way to do that.
Okay. On item one, I mean, I, I do agree with you on item one, Mrs. Ely, but when I look at item seven and eight, it's very specific saying who will be provided the information, and then number eight is very specific in, in the contact information. And I do believe that when this contract that will be signed is, is giving our Board Attorney the authority to, to get hired outside counsel, and that counsel would know, would need to know where his reports go and to whom he's sending the reports to. So on seven and eight-
Normally, we do not name other parties in regular contracts. And if we named Mr. Lake, then our names should all be in there too, because we're listed as School Board. The superintendent's name should be listed rather than just superintendent, instead of just Mr. Lake. You know, we should all have our names on there if, if, if his name is in there.
Well, could I make a, could I amend it to say that on number one, we'll keep it consistent, but as we're getting specific on into the contract, that we definitely keep it the way it is in the other areas, but in the opening paragraph, we could be very general, and then just get more specific as it goes along with exactly who that is and who they talk to.
So you're making-
How do I offer, how do I offer up a-
So you're making an amendment to the amendment?
Wait a minute now, before we do that now. We gonna be dealing with some people that, that can't figure out who our School Board Attorney is. Now, is, is, yeah, now, we gonna, we gonna be doing business with some people that, that don't know how to find out who our School Board Attorney is. I, I, I gotta caution y'all on that. And we got somebody that can't figure out who the School Board Attorney is. We got some problems with that, that attorney.
I think as a matter of courtesy, when you do want to send information, you might want to put contact information into it. We do have, we, we may not know, we may, I mean, if you look around, there are employees that may have the same last name. So we do have to say, this Stephen Lake is who we needed to go to. That, that would be my concern, that if you, if you gave me a contract and the contract is actually mailing, may go to Mr. Villanella in here. So, I mean, if, this is another attorney saying in line seven, if there are any motions, or if there are any, any filings or anything, that you should give me a report on those things. Where do we stand on cases? I think it's petty for, I really think that it's, it's to think that, yeah, if we hire someone, they don't know who to contact, you know, yeah, it would be sad. But I'm sure because we have already had other outside counsel agreements that go and have gone out, the exact wording, this is a template, and this is the exact wording that went out before we already approved prior contracts that say the exact same things. So I would ask Ms. Stacy to continue what you were saying.
And also, and, you know, and when people are dealing, they don't know how large we are. I know in some large districts, they have more than one attorney in the district. And this makes it very specific to anyone dealing with us, that this is the attorney, that we don't have several attorneys, like an attorney, a couple of attorneys representing different things, like they do in some of the large districts. This is very specific that they know exactly who to contact. And if you want, if you want me to amend that first paragraph, Mrs. Ely, and, you know, let that paragraph flow, but then when we get on into it, it's very specific, I, I would do that. Does anybody, how do you feel?
I, I agree with Mr. James. I don't think we need to put a School Board Attorney's name in. If someone doesn't know how to reach our School Board Attorney, we've got some problems here. And, and putting his name in, like I said, our names are not in there, the superintendent's name is not in there.
But they're not being asked to contact us either. They're being asked specifically to contact Mr. Lake.
Mr. Superintendent, you have something you want to add?
Just, just to add, for the intent, I refer you to the third page of the document, item number sixteen. This is a contractual agreement between one of our ESE attorneys. All ESE matters are handled through Mark Villanella. And so the people that actually received communication are Mr. Thomas and Mr. Villanella. And the document clearly spells that out. And so that's who, if you read that, all notices, requests, consents, and other communications required by this agreement are to go to these two individuals. And I just wanted to point that out to the board.
Okay, any further discussion? Ms. Stacy, you want to make a friendly amendment?
I could make an amendment to the amendment that maybe on the first, on number one, we make it flow, but but leave it as is everywhere else, just for convenience sake. Because there's several names, there's Andrew B. Thomas, he's in here, and Mark Villanella, you know, they, they contact those specific people. It doesn't say contact head of Student Services, you know. His name is specific, doesn't, you know, Mark Villanella doesn't say whatever his position is here. It names him specifically. And in contracts, I just like the specific, the easier it flows for people to pick up what they need, and there's an email address, they can just go right to him. I, I have a problem when contracts don't have enough information. And so I like this contract, but I would offer an amendment to strike in the first, number one, the name and put, and leave it School Board Attorney, since it looks redundant. But then to leave everything else, so could I make that motion?
Okay, so we have a motion?
I want to be clear, so Ms. Fly, could I get that clear? Again, so, just so I can review where we are tonight. Mrs. Ely is recommending we're essentially gonna strike part of one, strike part, the, the terms of seven, and strike in eight. And this is, and that's an amendment that has been seconded. And Mrs. Stacy is recommending to keep, I want to make sure we're keeping and-
Amendment to the amendment.
Okay, but what do you want to keep in the orig, in the original document? Are you, you're amending?
The other pages, I'm only, I am amending one.
You want, so you want it to read where that is still there?
Where Stephen Lake is removed, and it just says School Board Attorney. But then, as we go on into it, on the next two pages, leave it as written.
Seven and eight.
Leave seven and eight as written, because it just helps, because, I mean, if you're gonna be consistent, we wouldn't put Mr. Mark Villanella. We would just put whatever, Director of Student Services or whatever, I mean, that's the same thing. Then people could just go looking through the roster to find out who that is, and then find, it just makes it so easy to go straight to Mr. Lake's name when you're looking him up on the email.
You have an amendment, you need a second.
I have an amendment. I'd like to make a motion that we do-
Do I have a second to the amendment that Mrs. Stacy made?
Second.
Okay, we have a, the amendment to, to the amendment. We have a motion, and it's been settled. So do we have any more discussion on that? So we, we're gonna vote first for the amendment to the amendment. Okay, which is what Ms. Stacy, for, where she's saying leave item two? Well, no, take off, do, we do number item two, but everything else remains the same.
Item one.
Item one.
Everything else remains the same.
I amend amendment to only strike Stephen Lake wording in item one and leave item seven and eight as is.
So lots of informations there, like that.
So all those in favor of the amendment to the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
And call a question? What, what? Vote for it for me, please. Okay, and the vote is three, two, the amendment passes? Okay, and now we're going back to the, would you?
Original amendment?
The original amendment for Mrs. Ely.
Which has now been amended.
Which is now being amended to to say, with the strike, the words in item one, Stephen E. Lake, School Board Attorney, and on page two, items seven and eight will remain the same, will remain as printed. So all those in favor of the, I'll call-
Isn't this the same one that we just voted on?
Don't have to do anything in that.
So all those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Was that Mrs. Stacy's?
Mrs. Ely's with, as amended.
Striking just the one item, just in item one.
Are we now voting basically for C?
You're essentially, you're essentially voting on Mrs. Stacy's amendment now.
Amendment, right now.
That's, that's what the original amendment has now become.
And the motion passes three, two.
Now you get to vote on the motion as amended.
Pardon me?
Now you get to vote on the original motion as amended.
Now we need to vote on the original motion as amended. All those in favor of the motion?
Could you go over what that is?
Approved, so it's approved the outside counsel agreement with Andrew B. Thomas for legal services. And it says as amended, so as amended would be striking the wording of Stephen Lake in item one only.
We voted on that already. Now we're doing like the-
Now, okay, so everybody understands the motion?
Approved the agreement with the one revision.
As amended, as amended.
Well, I did before, yeah. It just said I voted, so.
Mrs. Ely?
It didn't take it the first time.
And the motion passes three, two. All right, thank you, Board. May I have a motion to approve the professional development services from Capitol, from Catapult Learning for Trinity Catholic High School? I need a motion and a second, please?
Still moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James, seconded by Mrs. King. Mrs. Stacy, you withdrew this item?
I withdrew this item because it was not consistent with C-28, C-29, C-31. It did not have the proper signatures, it didn't have the board, the chairman of the board's signature. It was not a properly executed contract. Per statute, six, seven, two point two zero one, anything over five hundred dollars has to be done in a legal, very specific way, and these two contracts were not. And I know that we are in the process of working on some templates and some different things to do, but until that happens, I think we need to keep our contracts consistent because C-28, C-29, and C-31 was written up exactly right, signed by the chair, it was an official contract. These two are more or less quotes, and that really is out of compliance with statute. And so I pulled them because I think it's time that we get into compliance and we we do what we're supposed to do, and just because people in the district don't really want to do it that way because they've always done it the old way, we're out of compliance if we continue doing this. And I want to bring it to the board's attention that by on the statute, six, seven, two point two zero one, that anything over five hundred dollars or more is not enforceable by way of action or defense unless there is some writing sufficient to indicate it is a contract. And this is not a contract, this is a quote, and I would like it addressed as a contract, just like the other three were done.
All right, Mr. Superintendent, you-
Fine, now, Mrs. Stacy, I'm not aware of your issues at all. You pulled this at about ten minutes to five this afternoon and did not call to share with anyone on our staff, so I'm not prepared to address anything. I think it would be appropriate if, if we did pull these, and perhaps even bring them back to you at a, at a future time. That's absolutely fine with me. I was prepared to address content, but I, I, I didn't have any idea, Ms. Stacy, why you pulled these items. I would appreciate in the future, if you would let us know, we'd be happy to address those, so we could handle that in an appropriate time.
Miss Tom, and I was at a medical doctor today, I was having an MRI. I barely got home in time to get ready to go to the School Board meeting. So, and where I was at, the doctor's office has all Wi-Fi blocked, I could not even make a phone call out, and I was there almost the entire day. So I'm sorry that I had to have an MRI and the inconvenience, June. But trust me, I was much more inconvenienced than you were. Thank you.
That makes sense to me that, that we not vote on these either one tonight.
So the superintendent is recommending that we don't vote on either one tonight, so we need a motion to table it.
That would be fine, yes, ma'am.
So would you need a motion to table it? Do I have a?
Motion table it.
Second.
Moved by Mr. James.
We do one at a time, please, we need to do twenty-seven and then number thirty.
Okay, yeah, we're doing number twenty-seven now.
Thank you.
Okay, that was Mr. James.
Mr. James made the motion, Mrs. King seconded the motion.
Okay. And we're going to vote.
Okay, and all those in favor of the motion, say aye, please?
Aye.
Aye.
That's the motion to table, opposed, like sign. And the motion passes to table item C twenty-seven. Thank you, Board. May I have a motion to approve the purchase of supplemental reading materials from American Reading Company? May I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms., Mr. James, and seconded by Mrs. Ely. Mrs. Stacy, you withdrew this item, you want to discuss it, or Mr. Superintendent already?
Same story, and I would like to make a motion to table.
Motion to table by Mrs. Stacy, they'll have a second. Seconded by Mrs. King, all those in favor of the motion to table, say aye. And the motion passes five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? EV three Lego equipment and supplies valued at sixteen hundred eighty-two dollars and eighty-four cents to Bellevue Middle School from Love Incorporated. Four thousand dollars to Dr. N X Jones Elementary School from Charles and, and Mary Ann Collins. An electronic scale valued at one thousand dollars to Fort McCoy School from Michael Holloway and Sandon Wheatons. Forty-eight ninety-three point fifty-four to Maplewood School for Maplewood Elementary PTO. A Sonex airframe kit, supplies and tools valued at twenty-one thousand dollars to Marion Technical Institute from Leroy Rogers. Two Angus crossbreed, crossbred heifers, heifers valued at four thousand dollars to North Marion High School from Tooten Incorporated. Thirty-five hundred dollars to Wyomino Park Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for the Grants for Great Ideas Projects NF Ninja's Reading Challenge. I have a motion and a second, please?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Ely, seconded by Mrs. King. Is there any discussion? I call a question, all in favor of accepting the donation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. And the motion passes five zero. Mrs. Ely, would you do us the honor of, of thanking our donors tonight?
Um, it's, it's just a privilege to um, be a part of a, a school system where our community recognizes the needs of our public schools, and the fact that not, not just um, not just our school advisory councils, but our businesses out there who are making donations, especially like the two heifers that were donated, the Angus heifers, um, four thousand dollars, I wonder what they're gonna look like next February, March. But thank you so much for your um, for your awareness of our great needs in Marion County schools, and our total was forty thousand dollars and sev, forty thousand seventy-six dollars and thirty-eight cents. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Ely. All right, Board, I'm gonna um, give you some meeting reminders. The organizational meeting of the Marion County School Board will be held on Tuesday, November the seventeenth, two thousand fifteen, at eleven AM. The purpose of the school board meeting is to determine meeting dates, time and place, as well as elect a chair and a vice chair. The annual leasing corporation meeting will immediately follow the school board's organizational meeting. The next administrative briefing, briefing and workshop is scheduled for Thursday, November the nineteenth, at nine AM. The purpose of the workshop is to review construction projects, attendance zones, two thousand sixteen to seventeen to code of student conduct timeline, and the parent engagement involvement committee report, as well as to, to discuss criteria for holding town meetings, that's on November the nineteenth. And remember, November the seventeenth, we have our organizational meeting. All right, Board, do you have any comments tonight, I'll start with, uh, Mrs. Ely?
Oh, I always do, and this is very positive. I wanted to congratulate, oh, oh, Shady Hill Elementary for representing Florida with their lambs. They're taking four of them to Kentucky, and this is their four H program there, Lindy Vatten uh, is the teacher. Um, she's teaching science in addition to four H, but they are raising sheep, two cows, steer, a goat, a pig, and rabbit, right there at Shady Hill around the track, and they exercise them, and that's how come those, those lambs are so healthy and have all that muscle, because they take the track along with the, the kids, and not, not with when they are, but um, the four H is going to Kentucky, and it's the first time that any Florida students um, are bringing their um, their sheep to the exhibition in Kentucky. So, I want to congratulate you, and go to Louisville, have a good time, and good luck. And the last thing I want to do is real, um, just make all of you aware, tomorrow's a big day, Veterans Day. Let's recognize all of our veterans, we have a lot of, of great Veterans Day programs, the big one is downtown at Veterans Day Park. My father is a veteran, he's ninety-eight years old and still kicking, he um, was World War II vet, he was a ma, he's a major, and he still lives in his own house, drives his own car, and he's going to be um, in the Veterans Day programs in Melbourne, where he lives. But um, congratulations, veterans, we salute you, and we thank you for all that you've done for our country.
Thank you, Mrs. Ely, Mrs. Stacy.
And I say ditto to our veterans, um, and I believe Mrs. Ely's father was dancing with her, and she lost her meniscus a little bit here last year, when she was dancing with her, at that, that time, ninety-seven-year-old father.
He still dances, he still dances.
He came out of it fine, she didn't. Um, I, but I would like to um, talk with the Board, I know we've um, had some discussions on curriculum and textbook approvals and that sort of thing. We've been reviewing Senate Bill eight sixty-four, which affects statutes one zero zero six point two eight and one zero zero three point four two. Talks about putting committees together and that sort of thing, I know we've talked a little bit about some of these kinds of things. And um, I would really like us to really get into our textbook policy, you know, how we choose our textbooks and stuff, and, and our board policy, you know, get a, get something, because I happen to know that here, our digits, um, our digits math book for the middle school students, the teachers voted almost four to one for, I guess it might have been McGraw, the other book, and somehow Pearson ended up with the contract. And um, I believe that we need to stop, I, I asked the person in charge of that at the time, last year, I said, you know, how did this happen? The teachers had gone to these meetings at night, they had um, spoken to the consultants that were selling the books, and the teachers went there in very good faith that their voice would be heard, and they had been told before that their voice often wasn't heard, but the vote came down four to one, um, almost four to one, um, with the teachers opposed to the book the district chose, and um, the, and the teachers have complained about that digits book ever since. And I asked her, and she said, well, the teachers just didn't vote the way we thought they would. We need a better reason than that, to not go along with the teachers on the books that they choose. And so, um, I would like to, for us to get into a deep discussion on how they're chosen, um, make sure that we have people in the community, and I know we have talked a little bit about having people in the community, and I know, Mr. Tom, and we've talked about that, but we need to ice it down, and we need to get a flat-out correct way to do it, so we're totally in compliance with Senate Bill eight sixty-four.
Thank you, Mrs. Stacy, so Mr. Tom, and Mrs. Stacy's asking for a workshop, and if you could find a place on our workshop schedule to put this item?
Certainly will, we'll bring two specific different concepts to you, the actual procedure that we have right now, and also a calendar of which textbooks are going to be adopted in the near future, and then we'll be happy to present that to you, and we gladly accept your input into that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. King?
All right, I, I get to say less tonight, because y'all are going down the room. So, I'm, I am going to begin with that, I would like to recognize Janet Lee, uh, she is a bus driver, and this summer she worked with Stuck the Bus, and she would work on Saturdays when it was blazing hot and a hundred degrees outside, and I just want to take a moment to recognize her, and, and uh, and um, if we can just pass this down, and I have a nice letter from the Veterans Council, too, that they would like to put in her file, if maybe we can send that back.
What did she do?
She worked, um, Stuck the Bus, um, Stuck the Bus works with our most media students.
You're saying Susan McGraw?
Is what?
Who, who did this?
Janet Lee.
Janet Lee?
Janet Lee, she's a bus driver. Okay, and also, um, I would like to speak to our parents, if you have not had a chance to sign up for Skyward, I highly encourage that you would do so, there is a lot of valuable information about your children in that program, so if you get some time to go up to your schools, and uh, you, all you have to do is sign up, and you'll get a passcode, and you can get on there and see all kinds of neat information, and uh, it's a great program, from what I can tell so far. And also, school board members, did you guys know that attendance matters? No?
We're not aware, we're not aware of that.
Great, 'cause last week I attended a tip meeting, and um, it was at the courthouse, and uh, it was very interesting, because uh, we had students there, and the parents also attended, and there was a lot of valuable information, and um, as a school board member, I took away a lot of information. And one little tidbit that I learned, and I think I might give you guys something every week to think about, but um, information that I received from the student services states that children who are chronically absent in pre-K and kindergarten are less likely to be reading by the third grade. So, again, I encourage our parents, if you have a difficult time getting your student to school, whether it may be sickness, or it may be that they just don't even want to get out of bed, I want to encourage you to contact your schools, reach out to your schools, because there are programs, and there are services to help you, whatever it may be. So, I um, just encourage you, reach out to your schools and see about getting our students in those schools. And um, I think I'll end on that, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King. Uh, Mr. James?
I just would like to take opportunity, um, just to commend the, the people that have been working in the extracurricular, uh, activities program. It's almost uh, to the end of this, the middle of the school year for us in terms of that. And I'd like to especially say hats off to our, our football programs. I had opportunity to watch Dun Ellen and Westport, and Dun Ellen High School finished ten and oh. And when you go and uh, to an undefeated season, and that's, that's almost highly unheard of. And I know that they did an exceptional job out there, but I'd also like to commend the students at Vanguard, and Forest, and all the rest of these schools, where these guys really put in a lot of time. And when I say put in a lot of time, if you go past the schools on, on Fridays or Saturdays or in the afternoon, somebody's there watching the, uh, making things happen for us in reference to the school. And so, when I, I look at what we talk about, if you have an oppo, uh, opportunity to pat those guys on the back, because we really don't pay them enough for what they do. And I just would like to say, congratulations to all the guys that will be going on, and congratulations to the kids for competing in, um, in these activities, as girls as well. And that's our volleyball program, because we did an excellent job. So, I want all of you to know that we have some kids that have really worked well, hard, and we have some teachers and staff, and this is the part that most people don't understand, when those kids are out on the field, they know what they're doing, but there were some people that really put all that stuff together to make it work for you. So, like, we got a person that'll be coming in from Bradford County, they have to make all of those little paperwork, and do all the little stuff to make sure that it's, it's well taken care of when those teams come into Marion County. So, congratulations, guys.
Thank you, Mr. James. Mr. Lake?
I'll pass, thanks.
Mr. Tom?
Thank you, Chairman Boynton, uh, just to follow up on Mr. James's comment, and I appreciate those for the extracurricular activities. Specifically speaking, we do have three district football champions in Marion County this year. You already mentioned Dun Ellen, North Marion, and Vanguard's, those three teams will be playing this Friday night. It's only fair to remind everyone, however, that these only state series passes will be accepted. The ticket price is set by, not by Marion County, not by the individual school, but by the Florida High School Athletic Association. So, we know a lot of parents are going to attend, and a lot of community, community members will be attending those events also. We've already mentioned Veterans Day, this, this little brief reminder, the program does start at eleven o'clock, but I'm going to suggest that you get there around ten o'clock, because it will be crowded, and the parking is a little challenging at times, there'll be a lot of buses there with, with students coming in. Approximately two thousand of our students will actually be there, uh, to celebrate, again, the great relationship that we have with our, our veterans organizations. And then finally, the district office, just for your information, will be having, and joining other school districts and, and other school offices around the campus, we will be having a canned food drive during the holiday season. So, should you be inclined to pick up something to put in our box, we'll be uh, not participating or challenging anybody, but we will be doing that in the front office here. And I have one more thing, and what I would like to do is, I would like to ask Mrs. Boynton, if she could please join me at the podium. Ms. Boynton, could you please? Mrs. Boynton has, has mentioned that we would be having our organizational meeting at our, at our next meeting, actually on Tuesday, two weeks from now, so this is actually your last meeting, serving as our board chair, and done an admirable job this year, you will receive the customary gavel, and what we'll do is, we'll shake your hand and turn this, this way right now, look toward the camera and smile, 'cause you deserve it, great job this year.
Thank you.
And since you challenged everybody else to speak from this area, you get to say something off the cuff, too.
Wow, well, I just want to thank uh, the Board and you, Mr. Superintendent, and, and all of the clerical staff who've been so supportive, uh, the principals who allow me on their campuses, and, and the students for allowing me to even read to them, uh, so far this year. But you allowed me to be the chair, and I really appreciate your vote of confidence in me, that I could lead our board, and, and that really means a lot to me, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent.
You know, usually, I'm not a person that usually have tears, but I got tears coming, so. Wow. Okay, now I don't know what to say. But thankfully.
No tissues up here, no tissues.
Wait, this, but thankfully, I have my little notes here, I um, thank you, thank you. Just, you know, and, just like everybody was saying about the Veterans Day event, I just want to let the Board know that Maplewood will be having their own special program, and Maureen, former police, uh, chief Maureen will be there, and I'm gonna be at that ceremony, so I may be a little bit late, Mr. Superintendent, if you could hold me a spot.
Hold out the big one, so Miss Boynton can get there.
Yeah, and um, I want to thank all the Board members again, we did have a joint meeting with the Marion County Commissioners, the City of Ocala, Bellevue, Dun Ellen, Reddick, we're all there, and it was wonderful. But I want to tell everybody, every Board member came, even the superintendent and our school board attorney, and it was just awesome for us all to get together at that time, so. And that's it, that's all my comments for tonight. Board, before addressing this portion of matters, I wish to acknowledge that Board members have received the alternative placement list for students from through October the twenty-third, two thousand fifteen. Are there any parents in the audience? Other than, other than parents, oh, excuse me, Board, I just lost my place. Are there any parents, other than a parent of J D sixteen oh nine in the audience, who wish to speak on behalf of a student regarding disciplinary item? In order to protect the privacy of a student, I hereby, I hereby con- conclude to televise and business portion of the meeting before a parent addresses the Board regarding a student disciplinary action. And it is? Six fifty-eight.